Hello hello, can you hear me? Good, you can hear me. Okay, so today's session is going to be on rational expressions. And there is, do we still have the link for the PowerPoint or no? A link for a PowerPoint for this? Okay, that's the PowerPoint link. If you want to download the PowerPoint that we're using, you can see the link on your screen. Here it is. Otherwise, you can just write the problems down. So, let's see. And I want to X, I want to get this out of the way. There we go. Okay, so in this question, it says to reduce the rational expression to its lowest terms. So essentially, what we need to do is try and factor. So the top is only the number 5, so there's nothing really to factor there. But at the bottom, we can take out the GCF, which is 5. So when we take out the 5, we're left with x minus 2. Now obviously, when we take the GCF out, if I were to distribute this, I should give back to the original. Now that I've taken out the GCF, I'm going to cancel where possible, which I can see I have a 5 and a 5 here. So my final answer would be 1 over x minus 2. Are there any questions about that to my one person in the audience? Yep? Thank you. Venina, do you have a question? Where did I get the one from? Okay, essentially, if, and I'll take it back to a different concept. We'll go to regular old, good old fractions. 4 divided by 4 equals 1, correct? So when we simplified the 5 over the 5, that's exactly what we were left with, the 1. You can't just leave it blank and it doesn't turn to 0. Cancel doesn't mean 0. Any other questions? Why don't I give the, you can, it wouldn't make it wrong, I could write it, but essentially, I don't necessarily need it because there's nothing out here being multiplied, it's just x minus 2. So I could write it with or without the parentheses at the bottom. Any other questions? It's the same thing as just x minus 2. Oh no, the fraction, no, okay. So is this answer equivalent to just x minus 2? Absolutely not. Um, the way this is written, this would be considered like a whole number, we would essentially put it over 1. So 1 over x minus 2 is definitely not equal to just plain old x minus 2. Any other questions, Math Depot? It is the reciprocal, there you go. Alright, so the next one. Um, again, it's just simplifying the rational expression. Now I have a trinomial at the top and the bottom. What you do not want to do is cancel this out the way you see here. Because the operation in between is plus and minus. You can only cancel from the numerator to the denominator when the operation in between is multiplication. So what we want to do instead is factor the top and factor the bottom separately and then see where we can simplify. And I'm sure somebody will help me if I mess this up. So I'm going to do the numerator on this side. And since there, the leading coefficient is 1, I would refer to this as the easy trinomials. I don't have to do too much thinking. The only way I can get x squared is by having x times x. And I know, also know that if I bring this first sign down, I get a minus and a negative times another positive is also a negative. So I have 2 negatives. This plus sign right here also tells me that my signs inside of the parentheses will be the same. And I can look here to see what it is, there's a couple of different ways you can figure out the signs. Um, the next thing I want to do is I want to take 15 and I want to list all the possible factors of 15. And then I'm going to choose which one of these adds to give me the middle term, 8. 3 and 5, very good. Out of habit, I always put the larger number first. Technically, since my signs are the same though, it wouldn't really matter in this case. So that is just the top being factored. Okay, sorry. You don't really want to lead off your factors with a negative. I mean technically, negative x times negative x is positive x squared. But I guess, I use the word grammar to associate it. It's not like, what's the right word I'm looking for? Not correct. Standard form, there we go, standard form. So we don't really want to lead off with a negative. Um, just as if, if this trinomial started off negative, I would have taken that out as a GCF because I want my problem to lead off positive. Okay, so that's the top part being factored. Now I'm going to go to the bottom. This also is a trinomial where the leading coefficient is 1, so it's pretty straightforward. Going to write my 2 sets of parentheses being multiplied together. Again, the only way to get x squared is to do the positive x and the positive x. This time, my signs are going to be a little different. The fact that my third term is negative, I know that I'm going to have 1 of each. 1 minus and 1 positive. The other way you could look at it is if I brought the first one down and I got negative and then a negative times a negative gives me the positive. Again, there's more than one way to justify the signs. And then I'm going to list all the factors of 6. I got 1 and 6 and 2 and 3. Since my signs are different, I want something that's going to subtract to give me the middle term, which technically is a negative 1. So what am I going to choose this time? I want to subtract to get 1. If I pick this, there we go. And again, it does matter which one goes first this time. Because since my middle term is a negative 1, I'm going to make my larger number negative because I want it to work out if I was to foil it. So now that I've factored the top and I've factored the bottom, I'm just going to rewrite the entire problem. So that you can see how they cancel. Okay, so now that I have my numerator and my denominator broken down into factors and that basically means they're being multiplied, I can cancel or cross out what is alike. And essentially, that means this turns into a 1 and this turns into a 1. So my final answer is x minus 5 times 1, which is just x minus 5. And 1 times x plus 2, which is this x plus 2. I don't need the parentheses, but I could write them, but again, it is correct just like this. Any questions on this one? Can I cancel those x's? No, you cannot. For the same reason up here, that we did not cancel the x squareds, we cannot cancel this x either. The only way you can cancel is if the operation between is multiplication. And here it's x minus 5 and here it's x plus 2, you cannot just cross it out that way. Has to be multiplication like it's represented here. Questions? No? Right here with the x minus 3? Is that what you mean by, oh, both the signs are negative, this one? Okay. In the trinomials, when the last term is negative, it's going to be 1 plus and 1 minus. Um, if you look at the numerator, you see that it's positive, that just tells me that they're going to be the same. I would look to this one to see, well, what are they going to be? So you notice they're the same and they're both negative. But again, that's not the only way to justify the signs, that's just one way. Um, the other way I mentioned is bring the first sign down, which is a minus. And then a negative times a positive is a negative. So it really depends which one works for you. Yes, going to add to get the middle term, you mean? Yes. Oh, okay. This also means, I don't know if, if you noticed, but in the numerator, where the signs were the same and again, the third term was positive, we chose numbers that would add to give us the middle. So 5 and 3 add to give me 8. But in the denominator, where the signs were different, we actually subtracted to get the middle term. And that is a pattern that you'll see over and over again. That was the question, right, Venina? Okay. Any other questions? There's a couple more good examples of these on the next slide. Okay. So we're still simplifying, we still have to be able to factor. Again, we cannot cancel from numerator to denominator here with these plus and minus signs. We have to make it multiplication in order to get rid of a couple things. So again, we're going to factor the numerator and then the denominator and then we'll put it back together and cancel out what matches. Um, this time, my trinomial leads off with a number greater than 1. So we're going to treat this a little bit differently. Are you familiar with the Colombian method, the square? Okay, good, sweet. So we have, I'm just going to rewrite it, 3a squared minus 8a plus 4. Since it leads off with a number that's greater than 1, what we're going to do is we're going to multiply the first and the last term by that number and change the trinomial just a little. We're not going to mess with the middle term at all. Next, we're going to go to our parentheses. And we're going to say, what is the square root of 9a squared? Which in this case would be just 3a times 3a. Um, again, since this third term is a plus sign, that tells me what? The signs are going to be what in here? They're going to be the same, they're going to both be negative. Um, and again, if, the other way to look at it is if I brought that sign down and then a negative times a positive is a negative. So whichever way works for you. Um, next, we're going to list all the factors of one of our numbers. Which number is that going to be? I'm circling it, 12. So we're going to list all the factors of 12, I'll do it on the side. I have 1 and 12, 2 and 6, and 3 and 4. Do I want something that adds or subtracts to give me 8? What do you think? I'm going to add because my signs are the same. I'm going to try to find something that adds to give me 8, which again is 2 and 6. Out of habit, I put the largest one first. Since I changed the problem in the beginning by multiplying by 3, I'm going to change the problem back by dividing by 3. So we changed it by increasing it by 3, we're going to change it back by getting rid of the 3. Which you can also kind of associate with finding the GCF. So if I look at these 2 terms in that first set of parentheses, what is the GCF here? What is the greatest common factor? Help me out, thank you, 3. And here, they don't have anything in common, which means they at least have what in common? 1. So again, notice, I'm dividing out by 3 here, 3 times 1 is 3, which is the same number I multiplied by in the beginning. So my final answer for just the numerator is going to be a minus 2 and 3a minus 2. Okay, question so far about the top part? That's just the top? That's just the top, I know, right? Get another piece of scrap paper. Alright. Okay, so now just the bottom. Now the bottom is not a trinomial, it's actually a binomial, there's only 2 terms. And whenever we start to factor, we always want to look for, is there a common factor first? Before you decide what kind of problem it is, you should always look for a common factor. So out of 9a cubed and 4a, what is the common factor here? Just a. So when I divide out the a, I'll be left with 9a squared minus 4. Can I keep factoring this part that's left in the parentheses? Yes, I can, anybody know what that's called? Difference of 2 squares. Here's the difference, which is the subtraction, and 2 perfect squares. I can take the square root of 9a squared, I can also take the square root of 4. So my final answer for the denominator is going to break down to the square root of 9a squared, which is 3a. The square root of 4, which is 2. And what are my signs going to look like? Opposites, 1 plus and 1 minus. So again, I'm going to bring my final answer back together, so this is the answer for the top. This is the answer for the bottom, also known as the numerator and the denominator. So I have a minus 2 and 3a minus 2 divided by, I have a a there, 3a plus 2 and 3a minus 2. What am I going to cross out? What am I going to cancel or simplify? My 3a minus 2s. So the part that's left, which is a minus 2 and a over 3a plus 2 would be my final answer. But, do we put, we usually put them back together, right? No, do we leave them like that on the competency checks too? Okay. I thought I saw somewhere they put them back together. Okay. Final answer. Any questions? Nothing? I think that's a pretty good assumption. The assumption, and you're talking about the denominator, right? Are you talking about the trinomial or the denominator? The denominator. Well, I don't, for this particular problem, I wouldn't really say that because it's not a trinomial. I could very well not be able to factor anything and the minus signs still be there. The, the only reason it ended up with 1 plus and 1 minus in this case is because it's the difference of 2 squares. Um, now in the trinomial, if it's a minus sign, yes, it's always going to be 1 of each. But, but that's not necessarily the case for every single problem. Because this part at the bottom isn't a trinomial, so you handle it a little differently. Well, this is just, um, one method obviously to factoring trinomials where the leading coefficient is not 1. Um, and this particular method, since we multiplied by 3 in the beginning, we have to divide it out at the end because if I were to stop right here, my binomials would not foil back to my original problem, right? So 3a times 3a gives me 9a squared, but technically, 9a squared wasn't the original. The original was way back here. So if I look at my final answer when I was done dividing, a times 3a gives me my 3a squared. The negative 2 and the negative 2 gives me my positive 4. And this part gives me my negative 8. So a good habit is to always foil your final answer to make sure you give back to the original, not the problem we changed it to. So we changed the problem to make it a little bit easier to find the factors essentially. And again, this is only one way. There's another way where you could change the problem to make it have 4 terms and then factor it by grouping, but that's a different method. Questions? If this was 7a? Okay, so if this was, should I rewrite it? Should I get it right? No, here we go. If this was 3a squared minus, oops, I wrote 8 anyway, 7a plus 4. That's what you're asking, right? What if the problem was this? Okay, I would have still started out the same, doing the 3 times the 3. And I would have had 9a squared minus 7a plus 12. I still would have listed all the factors of 12, right? And in this case, I would have said, I have, I would still have 2 minus signs, which means I want to add to give me 7. Well now, which one of these factors adds to give me 7? I would choose these 2 instead and work the problem the same way. So whatever factors you choose have to multiply to give you the third term and either add or subtract to give you the middle. Any other questions? Okay, let's look at another one. Okay. So now, not only do we have to simplify, but we have to multiply as well. Um, so before we get started, just a little reminder of how you multiply fractions. So let's just say I have something like this, 2 fractions being multiplied together. Um, you probably learned that you can just go ahead and multiply straight across, right? 2 and 3 gives me 6, 4 and 6 give me 24, and then you can simplify that. Or you can simplify first, right? So if I were to simplify first, and again, this is being multiplied, which is why I'm allowed to go ahead and simplify it this way. 2 goes into 2 ones, 2 goes into 6 3 times, and I would multiply the remainder. And I could keep going and keep going. Okay? Um, so we're going to use that same simplification kind of thing to come over here to this larger, crazier looking fraction. Okay? So essentially, just like we did before, we would factor the top and factor the bottom and cancel where possible. We're going to do the same thing here. So just this first fraction, I have 2x plus 10, so I'm just going to kind of label these because essentially, our problem has a lot of different parts, right? So I'm going to just factor the first part, which is 2x plus 10. And I'm going to ask myself if there is a greatest common factor, which in this case is 2. So I get x plus 5. So that is the factored form for just the numerator. Uh, the denominator, x squared breaks down into x times x because it's just x squared. The third part is x cubed. Again, I'm just breaking it down into factors so I can see how they simplify and cross out. And my fourth part is 4x plus 20. Again, I'm going to ask myself, is there a common factor? And in this case, it's 4, which leaves me with x plus 5. So now that I've factored everything, do you have a question? I thought I heard somebody asking something, okay. So now that I've factored everything, I'm going to go ahead and put the pieces back together so I can see what cancels. So the first part, I have 2 and x plus 5. The second part was just x and x. The third part was x cubed. And the fourth part was 4 and x plus 5. So now I'm just going to look from the numerator to the denominator and decide if there's anything I can get rid of, anything that you see. So I have x plus 5 going. I have 1, 2, I have 1, 2, anything else? The 2 and the 4, 2 over 4 simplifies to what? 1 half, so I have 1 half. So my final answer is going to be the parts that are left. I have a 1 here times x, which leaves me with just an x. And this essentially was a 1 as well because again, it doesn't cancel to a 0 or a blank. 1 times 2 is 2. Any questions? Thank you. Okay. Sweet, that is what I'm trying to do. So the next question, were you going to ask a question? No? Okay. I could also write it as 1x over 2. I could also write it as 1 half x, which is just kind of kicking the x out. The x is still part of a whole number, so there are different ways to write it. Yeah, you can't put the x at the bottom, the x is definitely next to it as a whole number. The 2 is the only thing that's, that's in the denominator. Um, and the 1 simply is just the coefficient of x, which we usually don't write. So that's where the 1 is coming from in both cases. Any other questions? Good one, Venina, thank you. Alright, let's look at number 5. So number 5 is just like the one we did previously. But, um, obviously, there's just a lot more trinomials here. So again, just trying to keep it simple, I'm going to break it down into 4 parts. Because I have 4 separate things that I want to make sure I factor, right? So just the numerator of this first one, part 1, I have t squared minus 16, which is what kind of factoring problem? What's it called again? We said this earlier. Difference of 2 squares. So that means I'm going to take the square root of both terms. Square root of t squared is t. The square root of 16 is 4. And then I'm going to have 1 plus and 1 minus. So that is just the numerator of the first part. Second part, I have a trinomial. And it's going to be an easy trinomial because the leading coefficient is 1. So I'm going to go straight to my parentheses. Now again, since the last term is a positive, I know that my signs inside of the parentheses will be the same and I can look over here to see what they're going to be. They'll both be plus. Again, the other way to think about it is if I brought this sign down and then a positive times a positive is still a positive. Same thing. The only way to get t squared is to do t and t. And then I'm going to list all the factors of 14. And I want to find something that's going to add or subtract to give me 9. Which one? Add, since the signs are the same, I want something that adds to give me 9, which is going to be 7 and 2. So that is the answer to just the denominator of the first part. I'm going to come over here, number 3, which is the numerator of this side. Again, it's an easy trinomial because the leading coefficient is 1. So I'm going to go straight to my parentheses. Yes, Venina? Leading coefficient, the first term's coefficient, it's leading off the problem. So, and that's an invisible 1, understood, right? As being 1. Um, since my sign here is negative, I can assume that what about my signs inside the parentheses? They're going to be 1 of each, right? They're going to be different. Okay? So again, the only way to get t squared is t and t. Listing all the factors of 21. Which one is going to subtract to give me 4? And again, I'm subtracting because these signs are different. So I'm going to pick my 3 and 7. And again, I'm putting my largest number first because since the middle term is positive, I want my larger number to be positive, that way when I foil it, it actually ends up being plus 4t instead of minus 4t. So that is the numerator of that piece. The bottom part, again, easy trinomial. What do, what do I know about my signs again, just by looking at that last term? Are they going to be the same? They're going to be different because it's a minus. Again, I have t and t. This time, I'm going to list all the factors of what number? 20. So I have 1 and 20, 2 and 10, 4 and 5. I want something that's going to subtract to give me 1 because I have 1 of each. So I'm going to pick 5 and 4. And this time, which number, I want 5 to be positive or negative? I want 5 to be negative. Because my middle term is a negative 1, I want to make sure that my larger number is negative as well. Okay? Another way, which if you're doing the, bring the sign down and multiply the signs, you might have something like this. So if I brought the minus sign down, a negative times a negative is a positive and then that would have been me putting my larger number first. But these 2 answers are equivalent. Okay, even though they're written reversed. So that's my fourth part. So now let's bring it all back together. Hopefully, I can fit it on here. Um, I have t plus 4 and t minus 4 divided by t plus 7 and t plus 2 times t plus 7 and t minus 3 divided by, and here's my answers down here, t minus 5 and t plus 4. So all the factoring is done, now it's just a matter of what can I get rid of? So what are we going to get rid of first? I have a t plus 4 in the numerator as well as the denominator, what else? t plus 7 in the denominator as well as the numerator, is there anything else? So I'm going to take the pieces that are left, which is, my numerator has t minus 4 and t minus 3. And then I have t plus 2 and t minus 5. So here's my, and we don't put them back together, we said that, right? We're leaving them simplified like that. Okay, so I'm going to put a star right here, this is my final answer. Any questions? Why can we what? From here to here, you mean? Why can we or why can't we? We can because the operation between is multiplication. So even though it's this fraction times this fraction, right? We learned, we, we reminded ourselves earlier that when we multiply fractions, we're just multiplying straight across. So it's the same thing. So it's almost like having 1 really big fraction with this numerator times this numerator, denominator times denominator, and you are able to cancel when the operation in between is multiplication. But back here, when the operation in between was addition and subtraction, we cannot. Well, technically, we want to simplify it. Oh, you can't hear the question, I keep forgetting. Oh, you can't hear the question, I keep forgetting. The question is, um, why don't we multiply back, right, that's the question. Technically, we're simplifying, which means we want it in simplest forms and simplifying factoring is part of what simplifying means. As well as in the higher classes, you're gonna do different things with these factors, so we don't wanna put them back together. Any other questions? Okay, let's see what else we have here. Oh, now they're getting real crazy. Okay, not so much. Alright, so the one difference immediately when you look at question number six is that it's no longer multiplication. Now it's division. So again, going back to fractions, right, we have to remember how to divide fractions. And does anybody remember how to divide fractions? We don't divide, we're actually going to multiply, but we have to change something in order to actually do the multiplication, which is. Flip the second one, so we're gonna find the reciprocal of the second fraction, which is really two thirds. So before you do anything. Change the sign to multiplication. And find the reciprocal of the second fraction, so I'm gonna flip this one. And I'm gonna change this to multiplication. And then we'll go through the same process of we have four parts, we'll factor all four parts. And then we'll cancel where we can, hopefully, I won't run out of space, not so sure about that. So that's okay, I can always rewrite it. Alright, so, um. I'm gonna just take a second, I'm gonna come over here to rewrite the problem showing me changing it to multiplication. Two M minus thirty-five, as well as finding the reciprocal, so just give me one second. Changing it to multiplication. M squared plus eight M plus twelve, and at the bottom, M squared minus seventeen M plus sixty. Okay, so now I'm gonna go ahead and label, and I do the labeling just so that I don't get confused. Because I'll forget which part goes where. Okay. Luckily, all of these trinomials are the easier trinomials, so we don't have to do the whole multiply and divide, multiply in the beginning, divide at the end. So for the first part. Which is that one. M squared. Plus two M minus thirty-five, I'm gonna go right to my binomials, which is M and M. M and M, yes, chocolate. And I'm gonna have one of each, bring this sign down, a positive times a negative is a negative. Again, the fact that this term is negative tells me they're gonna be different as well. Factors of thirty-five that will subtract to give me two, I'm thinking. Something like that, seven and five, I am gonna put my largest number with the positive because my middle term is positive. So that's the first part. Second part. We have M squared. Plus nine M plus fourteen, again, it's the easier trinomial. My signs here, are they gonna be different or are they gonna be the same? The same, because this is positive, so they are the same. And factors of fourteen that are going to add to give me nine. Seven and two, boom. Third part. Well, first part, second part, third part, fourth part. Don't confuse me, Venina. First part, second part, third part, okay. Alright, M squared plus eight M plus twelve. Boom, 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 I have M and M, again, my signs are gonna be the same or different? The same. Factors of twelve that add to give me eight. Six and two, two and six, very good, so third part, and let's see, we can squeeze one more in here. Fourth part. Are my signs gonna be the same or different? The same, but are they gonna be two positives or two negatives? Two negatives. So I have M minus, M minus, factors of sixty that add to give me seventeen. We can start from the beginning if we're not sure, right, two, three, and twenty, four and. Fifteen, what else, five and, five and twelve. So I want something that's gonna add to give me seventeen. So sometimes if I can't think of it off the top of my head, I just go in order, one, two, three, four, all the things that divide into sixty. To try and make sure I don't miss anything, if you skip around, you might just skip right over it. So I have five and twelve, and no, I didn't put the largest number first this time, but that's because both signs are the same, so it doesn't really matter. So now bring it all back together, hopefully, I can fit it in here. Alright, let's see, we have the first part, which was M plus seven. And M minus five. Divided by the second part, which was M plus seven. And M plus two. Times the third part. M plus six and M plus two. Divided by the fourth part, which was over here. M minus five and M minus twelve. That was all that factoring, now where do we cancel? Yes, Venina? Venina, what were you gonna ask first? If you, if you had the signs wrong, like one plus and one minus. You wouldn't really know you were wrong unless you foiled, if you were checking your work. I mean, most of these problems are built so that something cancels, that might be a flag too. That you've done all this factoring and nothing's cancelling, not to say that that can't happen, but in this, at this level, they usually do work out to cancel something. But if you did do one plus and one minus and you picked twenty and three, you would really, you would have to factor. But the signal, I guess, if you had minus three and plus twenty, well, negative three and a positive twenty would give you negative sixty. Which isn't the original, the original is a positive. So you really have to be diligent in just checking. Checking your work behind it. Because there are other factors that would give you seventeen like this one, like you said. But that takes you to subtraction, so you have to know, am I adding, am I subtracting? And are the numbers I'm picking gonna actually multiply to give me the original, sign included? Okay, okay, so now back to canceling, right? Um, I heard you say the sevens, right? And the M minus fives. And the, oh, they're really nice to us this time, so the only part that's left here is. Any questions? Let me box this in. Questions? No? Okay, so as you can see, really simplifying these rational expressions involves you have to be able to factor. You have to be able to factor first, and then you have to be able to identify what simplifies to one. So I think we have one more just like this, again, it's division, so we're gonna change it to multiplication and find the reciprocal of the second fraction. So I'll just take a second to rewrite it. I have three K squared plus nineteen K plus twenty. Divided by K squared plus six K plus five. Change it to multiplication. K squared minus two K minus three. And the two K squared plus two K minus forty would be at the bottom. The only real difference between this problem and the problem before is that we have some trinomials where the leading coefficient is one. And some where the leading coefficient is greater than one, that's the only real difference. So again, I'm gonna label my parts so I don't go too crazy. So I'm gonna try not to go crazy. Okay, so I have one. So since my leading coefficient is greater than one. I'm gonna do the multiplication in the beginning where I take the three and I multiply it by itself and the last term to get a new trinomial. Okay? Oh, oh, thank you, that would have caused me all kind of problems later. I would have been like, why isn't this working? Okay. So I changed it, so since I multiplied by three, um, the next step would be to find the square root of the first term. Which gives us the first terms in both sets of parentheses. I know that by this, my signs will be the same, again, bring this sign down, multiply these signs to get a positive, so they're the same. I'm gonna list the factors of sixty. And I want something that's going to add to give me nineteen, so it's gonna be fifteen and four. And again, since I multiplied the problem by three in the beginning and I changed it, I wanna make sure I divide out by three at the end. So I'm gonna get K plus fifteen and three K plus four, and that is only for the first part. So I'm just gonna come over here, gonna start writing my answers in. Okay. K plus fifteen. Oops, I wrote fifteen, it's five. Was anybody gonna tell me? Did I say five or did I say fifteen? Okay, thank you, thank you, thank you, don't chastise me, okay, there we go. So just in case I lost anybody, the three K divided by three gives me K and the fifteen divided by three gives me five, not fifteen. Okay, so that's the top part. Um, the denominator is the easier one, we have K squared plus six K. Plus five, I'm gonna go straight to my binomials. K plus, K plus, factors of five that add to give me six. It's gonna be five and one. So that's the bottom part, that one's pretty straightforward. Okay, um, part three, which is also another easier trinomial. Again, I have K and K, this time, are my signs gonna be the same or are they gonna be different? They're gonna be different, gonna have one minus and one plus, factors of three that subtract to give me two. I'm thinking three and one. Anybody have questions about that part? Okay. Okay, last but not least, the fourth part. Two K squared plus two K minus forty. Again, the leading coefficient is greater than one, no? Oh, yeah, you're right, especially since I have the answers in front of me. Okay, I got a little out of my groove, guys. Okay, so two K squared plus two K minus forty, and again, I know I said it earlier, but I'm not doing it myself. You have to always look for a GCF first, and they're all even numbers, so I'm gonna take the two out. And what happens is I'll be left with an easier trinomial. Plus K minus twenty, boom, very good, so now I have two. The only way to get K squared is K and K, my signs are gonna be different, one plus and one minus. What are some factors of twenty that subtract to give me one? Five and four, boom, come over here. K minus four, now we can start canceling, what are we gonna cross out? K plus five, I know I was getting the red flag from Alberta over there. Okay, or I could have did right, right here, doesn't really matter, anything else gonna cross out? K plus one. And then the pieces that are left will be my final answer, so I'm gonna have three K. Plus four. K minus three. Divided by, I'm gonna have this little guy, the two, come out in the front. Yay, any questions? Yay, any questions about those? Yes, so now Mr. Alfaro is gonna take over to do the remainder of the problems, thank you for not killing me.
Hold your applause. There's more coming. Okay, so in these problems, we're changing a little bit, we're not doing multiplication or division anymore, now we're doing addition. So just like when you were adding two fractions together, so think back to when you were adding. A third plus two thirds, remember that you need a common denominator? So same thing here, you still need a common denominator, so we already have a common denominator of three X here. So all we're gonna do is gonna go ahead and add the numerators together, and that's gonna give us six over three X. The question was, can we reduce it, and we absolutely can, you can think of the six as a two times three. And so what I see is, I see that there's a factor of three in common here. So that reduces to two over X. See a question? The question was, can we write that as two and the X to the side? And the answer is no, because this is two divided by X, that is our answer, as opposed to two multiplied by X, they're different operations, in fact, they're inverse operations. Any other questions? The other question was, can we divide, can we make it into X over two? And so some of the things we know about division is that division is not commutative, and what that means is, alright. With multiplication, if you take two times three, you get six. And if you flip that around, three times two, you still get six, so we say that multiplication. Is commutative. With division, let's say you have six divided by three, you get two. But when you take three divided by six, you take three dollars divided into six friends, you don't get two, you get fifty cents. So division is not commutative, which is why we can't flip around the division. Good question. Anything else? Alright, let's move on. Alright, question nine, we need to add these two up, now the problem is that we don't have a common denominator anymore, right? The other one had a common denominator, this one didn't, so what I like to do is I like to identify what the lowest common denominator is before I go on. So let's deal with the numbers first, twelve and twenty-four, I need the smallest number that twelve and twenty-four divide into. So. Okay, well, the question is, some people said twelve, the question is, can twenty-four divide into twelve? No, right, so that can't be it, so it has to be twenty-four. Twenty-four is the smallest number that will divide the twelve and will divide the twenty-four. Alright, now when I think about numbers that will divide X squared and X, the smallest number that can do that. Is X squared. Cuz X squared fits inside X squared, and a single factor of X certainly fits inside X squared. Okay, yeah? Okay, so somebody asked a question, what would happen if I pick six as my lowest common denominator? The problem is that twelve does not fit inside six, so in a minute, we're gonna do some equivalent fractions, so we're gonna say, alright. Forget the variables for a minute, let's say we were adding just two good old fractions, that's a seven, two good old fractions, right? I need a common denominator, if I were to choose six. The question would be, how do I make these fractions be, have a denominator of six? And I couldn't because I can't convert that seven into a denominator of six. Right, if we instead pick twenty-four, which is what we wanna do. Get my eraser here. We pick twenty-four. And that's simpler because now all I have to do is multiply that seven by a factor of two. And that'll get me to that twenty-four in the denominator, right, good question. We never finish picking our lowest common denominator, we have twenty-four, that is the lowest common denominator of twelve and twenty-four, we have X squared, that takes care of our Xs. And we also need a single Y cuz it will divide each factor of Y independently into it. Okay, so the next question is, alright, my LCD is twenty-four X squared Y. How do I convert these fractions to that denominator? So this fraction is missing a factor of what? To make the twenty-four X squared Y. It's missing a factor of two. And everything we know about fractions tells us that we have to multiply the numerator and the denominator by the same number. So when we do that, we get fourteen. I'm sorry that my writing is going sideways. How about this one on the right, what's it missing to make? How about this one on the right? What's it missing to make a factor of twenty-four X squared Y? It's missing a factor of X. So I'm gonna multiply that on the numerator and the denominator. So we get three X over twenty-four X squared Y. Questions so far? Alright, so finally, the very last step is to add these terms up. We know that the fourteen and three X are not like terms, but they are over the same denominator. So I can write it like this, it's fourteen plus three X all over the same denominator of twenty-four X squared Y. That is our final answer. Questions? Yes. So there's a question of why is it not seventeen X? And remember, when we are adding terms together, they must be like terms. Fourteen and three X are not like terms. And it's a good time to review, what's a like term? Like terms have two features. Do you remember what they are? What makes like terms? Same variable and same exponent. Mm-hmm. Absolutely. If the problem had said fourteen X plus three X, then this would have been seventeen X. Alright, let's move on. Question ten, subtract a rational, rational expression, simplify if possible. So just like addition, subtraction needs a common denominator. Do we have a common denominator here? Yes, the common denominator is X. So all I'm gonna do is keep my X, go ahead and subtract my numerators together. Five minus three is two. Thank you for that easy question. So, can I simplify that? Well, let's see, are there any factors of two inside X? There's only a factor of one. And any factors of X inside two? Nope. So that's it. Do you not agree, Professor Burnett? Alright, let's move on. Okay, so the way this is written is a little deceiving, so I like to write the five Y as a fraction. To write any number as a fraction, you just put it over one. Let me retry that again. Okay, now the question is, what is the lowest common denominator between these two fractions? And so I need to be able to divide a factor of one, and I need to be able to divide a factor of X squared. So if I have a common denominator of X squared, can I divide one into X squared? Yeah. And can I divide an X squared into an X squared? Yeah. So my lowest common denominator is X squared. Questions about that? We're good? Okay. So then, what's this denominator missing to make an X squared? It's missing an X squared. And I have to multiply both the top and the bottom by that. So when I multiply that out, I get five X squared Y over X squared and six over X squared. Because they share a denominator, let's just go ahead and write it as a single fraction of five X squared Y minus six all over X squared. Any questions on this problem? Yes. So there's a question as to why I didn't cancel the X squares before I brought them together, and that's a good question. If I cancel these X squares out, what'll happen? If I cancel those X squares out, I'm gonna be left with a five Y, which is what I started off with, isn't it? So canceling the X squares out is just the inverse of what we did to begin with. We want those X squares there, so we have a common denominator. It's a good question. The next question was, could I cancel the X squares here and here? Like we were doing before, and the answer is no. When we were doing multiplication before, so let's suppose we had this problem times six over X squared. I remember Professor Washington saying, remember, think of this as a long fraction bar, multiplication, think of that as a long fraction bar. So then that X squared and X squared would be part of the same fraction, I could cancel that out. But this is a subtraction. These are not factors. They're being subtracted. Any other questions? You're trying to not let me off so easily, aren't you? I know. Okay. The average price of gas is three dollars and nineteen cents to buy one gallon. How much would it cost to fill up an eleven gallon tank, set up the proportion and solve? So let's set up this proportion. So I have that three dollars and nineteen cents will buy me one gallon of gas. So on the other side, when I set this up, I need to ensure that I have dollars on top and gallons on the bottom. So the other piece of information I see is that they wanna know how much is an eleven gallon tank. I don't know how much money that would be. So with any proportion, how do we solve them? We cross multiply, very good. Alright, so we're gonna cross multiply. I'm afraid to do big circles on this thing cuz it won't let me. So I'll just do this. We cross multiply. So when we do that, we get three dollars and nineteen cents times eleven equals one times X. And three dollars and nineteen cents times eleven comes out to be thirty-five dollars and nine cents. I did this ahead of time. And remember that one X is the same thing, it's just X. So I have already found my value of X, which is just thirty-five dollars and nine cents. Questions? Question is, what happened to the gallons? Good. And I didn't write my units when I was going, I was going around, but we had is you had gallons times dollars. So if you wanna put gallons here, you can. And then here you had gallons times dollars. Okay, so when you multiply the units of gallons and dollars, and then you divide by the gallons, the gallons cancel out. Left with just dollars. You can multiply units very much like you can multiply numbers. We had gallons times dollars. That's from the three dollars and nineteen cents times eleven gallons. That gave us gallons times X dollars. It's a good question. Uh, let me finish this one really quick and then I'll, I'll get to that one. When we divided by gallons on both sides, the gallons canceled, leaving us with just dollars. The other question was, why was it important to keep the dollars on both sides, to keep them lined up? The reason is, these three dollars and nineteen cents per one gallon, we call that a ratio or a unit rate in this case. Um, it's important that the relationship, the comparison between the dollar amount and the gallons is the same on both sides of the proportion, or it won't be a true proportion, both sides won't be equal. If I all of a sudden change this up, if I say three dollars and nineteen cents over one is equal to eleven over X, this is not the same, this is not the same, uh, comparison. This is comparing dollars to gallons. This is comparing gallons to dollars, different comparison. So this would be wrong. Any other questions here? Do we need to cover multiple ways of setting it up? No? Okay. Alright, and question thirteen. At birth, the average length of a baby is forty-seven point four centimeters. How much would this be in inches? And they're letting us know that one inch is approximately two and five tenths of a centimeter. So I like to start with that conversion factor. That one inch is two and five tenths of a centimeter. And then again, keep in mind that relationship. This is a comparison between inches and centimeters. So on the other side, I will also need a comparison between inches and centimeters. So I don't know how many inches long the baby is, but I do know that an average baby measures forty-seven point four centimeters. Did we not want to use a proportion? Okay. And so now, just like in the last problem, we're gonna cross multiply to solve. So when we do that, we get forty-seven point four times one equals two point five times X. We know that forty-seven point four times one is just forty-seven point four. Then we divide both sides by the two point five to get X by itself. When we do that division, we get that the baby measures eighteen point ninety-six inches. Is that an accurate? Is it true? I don't know. Who came up with this problem? Yes, okay. The question was, is this a real, a real, uh, average measurement of the length of a baby? And yes, the at thirty-six weeks, a baby born at thirty-six weeks has an average length of forty-seven point four centimeters. Are there any other questions we didn't answer that you wanted to ask? None? Alright. Yes, there's a question. You're saying in the book, it tells you to use the, the given factor first?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Okay, so can we do it the other way? Alright, sure. Yes, we can do it another way. We can do it using dimensional analysis, also known as unit multipliers. Okay. Yeah, I know, I did that video. So the question was, can we do this problem a different way? And yes, absolutely. There's something called dimensional analysis, and let's do that this way. So it's given to us that the baby measures forty-seven point four centimeters. Another way to do this is to say, alright. Some people set it up like this, some people don't. But they say, alright, we're gonna treat the units just like numbers. They're gonna put centimeters on the bottom, so that centimeters cancels the centimeters in a fraction, and then we're left with inches. Now we're gonna put the conversion factor here. We know that one inch is two point five centimeters. This will allow us to cancel the units of centimeters. And when you go through, treat this just like a fraction. We get forty-seven point four times one divided by two point five, which is the very same thing we did to solve for X before. This comes out to be eighteen dollar, or eighteen point ninety-six inches, not dollars. The baby is not measured in dollars. Professor Burnett would like you to know that babies can be measured in dollars if you wanted them to be. Is there a question? Okay. Okay. Okay, so if you are in developmental math two in, with semesters, that's fall twenty-twelve cuz the book will change if you're watching a recorded version. So there's a page in your textbook that says, know your signs, and then it has, uh, basically this information. It says, multiply plus, and it says, then the signs are, and then it says, plus plus or minus minus. And says, add plus, plus plus or add negative, minus minus. And then there's another part, I'll explain it in a minute. The question is, can we explain this page, right? There's another place that says, multiply negative, and then it says, then the signs are and then it says plus and minus. So the way to read something like this is to say, alright, if you have something like X squared uh, minus X plus six. We know that this factors into X minus three, X plus two. So what this is trying to tell us, sorry, no, this has to be negative. One second. I should have come up with a problem before I began. Oops. There. There we go. So it's talking about the very sign at the end. If the sign at the end is negative, and we're gonna start with a simple example here, if the sign at the end is negative, then the two signs of each factor are gonna have a positive factor and a negative factor. And the reason is that the two numbers are gonna multiply to be negative six, so they have to be different signs to multiply to negative six. Now, suppose you have X squared minus five X plus six. That factors into X minus three, X minus two. And what this is talking about, now we're gonna talk about the top part here. By the way, I don't know if I forever remember to mention the page in the book. This is page one ninety-five in the book. To get that positive six at the end, the two numbers I multiply, to get a positive six, it either needs to be two negatives to multiply to a positive or two positives to multiply to a positive. So those are the only ways to get positive six, either two negatives or two positives. So that's what this is saying here. It's saying it's either gonna be two positives multiplied together or two negatives multiplied together to get me to the positive six. Now, if it's two negative, if it's two negatives multiplying together, then the two numbers that I'm, the two numbers have to add, negative three plus negative two, have to add to that middle number, which is negative five. If the two numbers have to be positive, then the positive numbers have to add to the middle number. It's a, it's a page that would be, would do well with a little more explanation. Okay, um, I think Professor Washington, did you show the trick with the signs, how you guys do it? Yeah. Mm-hmm. So a good trick is, let's say you're given X squared minus X minus six. A very easy way to remember your signs is to say, alright, just bring down the first sign, which is negative, and then multiply the first and the second times together. A negative times a negative is a positive. And when you do this, always make sure you write the largest factor first. So the factors of six that we would choose here are three and two, so you would write the three first. That will always work. Okay. You, there's no need to memorize all the negative, negative, plus, 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 negative. Anything else?
Bring down the first sign.
Mm-hmm.
And then you multiply the signs together, give you the second.
Mm-hmm.
Which also goes with the fact that the negative times negative, we know that it's different.
Yeah. Just so I can get it on the recording, the thing that was just said in the room was that you can use this sign as an indicator of the signs of both factors. So if this is a minus sign over here, that's an indicator that the signs will be different. If it's a plus sign there, then that's an indicator that both signs will be the same. So either way you wanna think about it. Alright, so I think I'm gonna end the session. There's no more questions. If anybody that watches this recording later has any questions, feel free to stop by the Math Depot. And I'll see you on the campus, building four.